Folks, I don't know if this is loud enough. They're getting it over here, so I hope that you're getting it there. I want to take this opportunity to welcome you to Davis County Fiscal Court's version of Speak Up. Many of you know that Davis County Fiscal Court puts on a TV show, a half-hour TV show. I think it's the second Tuesday generally of the month, and at that time, all the Fiscal Court shows up and we take questions from the general public about anything that they want to ask. Tonight, we thought that it would be a wonderful opportunity for Congressman Guthrie to host this Speak Up. He doesn't look like Kirk or Patrick. I certainly am not Kirk or Patrick. Kirk is generally our host, but we thought we would invite him here. And I want to thank you for being here, first of all, for filling the courtroom. And just reiterate what Suzanne said. Certainly, tonight is a night for you to ask any question that you might of the Congressman. He's pretty light on his feet. But it's not a night to debate things. That would be better done in private and be respectful of your neighbors. Without any further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Congressman Brett Guthrie, representing the 2nd District. Owensboro is in that 2nd District, and we talked this morning. We're very happy to continue to have him represent this district. If any of you know anything about the Congressman, he is a West Point graduate, served in the military, and he comes to Davis County quite often, taking care of veterans' affairs and making sure that those people who served the military, those people who made it possible for us to have a meeting like this here tonight, get their just desserts, get medals that they should have earned or should have gotten, they get them. And he's been here on many, many occasions. This is your 21st Town Hall Meeting, and as he said, he's not coming to Davis County last. He actually is accommodating Fiscal Court. So Congressman, welcome. I don't think we have somebody designated, but we've been...
I forgot. Call in now.
Okay, actually, this is on television, so if people are listening on television want to call in, 685-8424.
270.
270. So hopefully got that. I could remind you from that one then. All right, well, thanks. Let me... I think that somebody did... Mr. Huff, you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
We'd like to start off with a pledge. We've been doing our pledge. Go ahead, stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Flag's here in front of you.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, and thanks for coming out. What a great crowd on a Thursday night. I understand Kentucky Wesleyan is kicking off. We're trying to plan around Friday football and Saturday football. Forget about Thursday football, that's a new college thing that's kind of happened the last few years. Come on in. But we are on television, and so we've been just mingling with it. I mean, having an interaction this way, but we have to, because of television, the microphone's important. If you want to ask a quick question that I can repeat, that's fine. If you... Some people want to give longer questions to make points, which is fine. We're all here to talk. If you do that, you have to come up here, because if you don't come up here and do that, everybody on television, it'll be silent for however long you're talking, and we don't want that. But if you want to ask something quick, I can just repeat the question for that. But we want... Glad you're here, and I'm not here to give a speech. I'm here to hear what you guys want to talk about. And so I'm just opening the floor, and I'll talk into somebody who wants to ask the first question or has the first... Yes. Sorry about the microphone situation, but it's the TV.
Congressman, my name's Mark Potts. I'm from Owensboro, and I was watching the hearings yesterday on the strike that's being planned, and General Dempsey, he was asked a very simple question from Senator Corker from Tennessee. He asked him, "What is our objective?" He looked like a deer in the headlights. He never did answer the question, never could answer the question, and I was wondering if you could tell me or tell us what our objective is and what your position on this resolution is.
Okay. So the question is, what's the resolution on... What's my position on Syria and conflict, the war in Syria? I was one that signed the letter to call the President to say, "Congress needs to make this decision." I think it's clearly Article 1 of the Constitution where Congress makes the decision to do so. There are times... You know, the last time we actually declared war was in 1941, and nobody would argue when the Japanese were bombing at Pearl Harbor. War wasn't declared, we didn't have the right to shoot back. Well, I'm certainly not saying that, but I think if the President had time to let the British Parliament to come into session to make the decision, it certainly had time for us, and obviously, previous times not even of the essence right now, is what he's saying. You know, I've got to clear what the military objective is, other than the objective that they say is, "We got to show Bashar Assad that if he's going to gas his own people, that's unacceptable international law. It violates international standards, so the international community needs to react." That's what they say. That's what their objective is. My point with that, and my position is, I'm currently, I'm not convinced that we need to do it. What I have said publicly, and I'm not going to go against my word, is that I want to have an intelligent briefing in a secure setting, which I can't get until I get back Monday. And I've been in those secure briefings, and I can tell you, there's probably nothing in that that you haven't already heard, because it's just the nature of the way the news is now. And so there's nothing that I've heard, and I listened to the hearings, that convinces me we should engage in Syria. It is sad. I do think Assad probably did it, from what I've seen. I think he did it to his own people. But the international community, the President says that, you know, Congress should do this, and I can't think of the actual word that he said. I can't remember. It was, you know, not really. He just kind of said, "If Congress doesn't do it, they're not living up to international law and standard." Well, no other country. But I know of, France has said that they're interested in helping, but I don't think they've ever said what that help is. You know, Britain decided not to do it. They're trying to redo it again. So the President hasn't built international... I think, and I think the U.S. Conference of Bishops, I met with Bishop Medley today, has come out against the strike. But it's not as the President says, that all reasonable people in the world want this strike to happen. And so there's two things. One is, I don't think there's an objective. I don't think they met the standard of having a military objective. The second thing is, if you ask, a big question too is, "Well, what if they shoot back?" So we're going to have a limited battle of war. We're going to have, you know, no boots on the ground. We're just going to go shoot across the bow, is what the President said. But what if they shoot back? And John Kerry's answer to that was, "Well, Bashar Assad, if he did that, it would be absurd for him to do that, because it would look to the wrath of the world. Will he gas his own people or chemical attack his own people?" So I don't think he's a rational actor. And I think John McCain compared it to Czechoslovakia in 1939. I heard him say that. I heard somebody else say, what if, was it not Archduke Sarajevo and Star Duke Ferdinand and Sarajevo in 1913 that unleashed, you know, really two world wars, because there were an interim between the 1st and the 2nd, essentially. So I'm... My position now is not to support it. I do think I owe it to you guys to at least get the inside intelligence, which I'm telling you, I've been there, and you walk out and you hear on the news what you saw in some of these. I really feel like, I don't think there's anything that's going to change, and I expect about no. Yeah. And you know what? And I've been around probably, I've had three Town Halls. I was a rooster busher this morning, so I've been around several hundred people, and I've actually had one that said, "We should do it just on humanitarian reasons and no others." I don't know if anybody here would like a different, offer a different opinion of that, but I... And the cause or office is about 150 to 1 against... Well, I said, "I know where this, like, district is." And if I can't see something that says, "Hey, this is a case I can make to you guys," then I can't... I mean, it's not, it's not what the district wants to do. But it's not just that. It's just, I don't think that we define the objective nor really understand what the consequences are. Good question. Thanks. Yes, you want to use the...
I guess I'll...
Because you're probably going to give a... If you're going to give a long question, you need to use it, if not, I'll repeat it.
No, just to comment on the same issue.
Okay, yeah.
I'm Barbara Knott. I'm Chair of the Owensboro Tea Party. We have, we don't have the results of Benghazi. Why on earth would we go into Syria like this? It's a mess. And there's really no proof that those pictures that everybody has seen on television are Syrian people and that I've heard comments that they were actors pretending to be dead. I've also heard that they were pictures reused from Iraq and Saddam Hussein's thing with the Kurds. More needs to be investigated and to be caught in the middle of bad and bad. And then that's... And we don't know with Hezbollah coming through our own border. We've got to correct our own border first. Seal it completely. Bring our guys home and let them stay on the border and seal our border and stop Hezbollah and everything else coming through that shouldn't be coming through. Thank you.
Thanks for that. And, you know, even if you accept that it was Assad, and Assad did it, and it's as you believe it to be, still the lack of the military objective that we can accomplish. And really, I haven't got a good answer on what happens when they, if they shoot, if they attack Israel. You can attack Israel and think it's going to be a short conflict with no boots on the ground. I mean, I just don't see how you do that. And you got into Benghazi, which is a reflection of Libya and the chaos in Libya. So what has happened over the last year and a half in Syria, Al Qaeda has infiltrated the opposition. You're right about that. So Intel says that pretty, we think, pretty clearly. And so if you lose one guy who's a bad guy, could you end up with some worse? And it's, the President's in a tough situation. I'm not dismissing the situation that he's in with this, but that's why James Madison wanted a group of people to come together, the Congress, to make the decision when we go forward this way. Okay. Well, they have a hand up, but go ahead. Since you're up, you're up first, so go ahead, and then you go next.
Well, since we were talking about borders, it's time for immigration question.
Okay.
For the past eight years, I've had people come to me, and usually, they could bring an advocate with them, a preacher, a teacher, an employer, and they, the person with them always says, "Oh, this guy is so great. He's so smart. He's so compassionate, telling me all the great things that this person's done." And inevitably, I roll my eyes, not because I don't care, but because the U.S. government doesn't care if they're a wonderful person and if they've got children here and are contributing to our community. And I have to tell them, "You've got to wait for reform." And more or less, that there's no hope until there's reform. Or you can go back to home country and leave your children for 10 years. And that's always not a really good option. So I had a little hope for these people with the passage of Senate Bill on immigration. And I've heard that the House bill is, or that the House is going to tear apart the bill and just concentrate on enforcement without any path to legalization. And now, we have about 24,000 undocumented people living in Western Kentucky, and they reflect what I believe is the rule, that these, most of these people are the good people that the preacher and the teacher say they are. And what are we... What do you propose or what do you think the options are in the House of passing legalization? Is it possible to get a path for legalization, or is it just going to be enforcement only?
Thanks for that. And I answered that. The House isn't going to do the Senate Bill. I mean, Speaker Boehner's already said the House isn't going to do the Senate Bill. And there's been a few massively comprehensive bills in the last few years, and it seems to be a lot of unintended, a lot of other consequences. I'll tell you my position and what I think the House is going to do on that, because the Senate Bill does deal with border security. And I've talked to a lot of people about this, because it's something that, but it came to it late, and there's a provision that, like, the Homeland Security Secretary can waive the requirement of security. So there's certain things that we have to... You know, actually, if you poll a majority of Americans, they want to deal with immigration reform. But they all say they want to make sure that we don't, we're on the same problem again 20 years from now. And so what the House is looking at doing, and it is going to be step by step, and it really goes, and I think, most American people want, and really deal with the issue. One would be the border and security and enforcement. What we're, what we argue amongst ourselves is, on our side at all, I guess you would say, is how do you certify this? What does a secure border mean? How do you certify it? And that's something we're debating as the bill, what the bill, the current bill that you're, as part of it, so there's like four or five bills moving, uses the Government Accountability Office. There's some question whether it should be Homeland Security Secretary, or a question, should it be border governors? You know, and I think if it's going to be border governors, it needs to be Montana and North Dakota and Maine and those others as well, because that's... And so, but if Government Accountability Office is one, that people kind of think is nonpartisan, it's a lot of respect as an agency in Washington. So that's what we're arguing with. The second one is enforcement. As you said, I think people say, "If we got a secure border and effective enforcement of the law as it is..." So there is a provision that, you know, Arizona passed a state immigration law, they got ruled unconstitutional, a provision to allow states to pass immigration law, but they can't be more stringent than the federal law. They have to comply with the federal law. And what that really, all it really says is that state police and sheriffs and local police can enforce immigration law. So, you know, I think if people say, "The border's secure, and we know we got effective enforcement of law, then let's deal with the immigration problem." I personally think you have to deal, at least with the existing immigration issues, because if, to have a secure border, you have to have a way for people to come here legally to work in a legal way. I mean, in a, in a legal way, because what happened in '86, it was Ronald Reagan, when they had true amnesty, and they said, "We'll secure the border." They never really did, but what happened, if you remember, is the boom from about 19, mid-'80s till really the mid-2000s, or 2008, other than 9/11, you know, demanded a lot of people to work for a full employment, and there was not a legal way for people. It's a very difficult process for people to come here legally to work. And so, so the pressure on the border was just tremendous, because there were jobs to be filled and move forward. So we have to have a pathway for people to come here legally to work. And in the House now, we're really dealing with a couple of categories in that. One is technology, you know, high-tech workers, master's degrees, people, physicians, you know, we're low-will physicians in our country, a lot of foreign medical grads that have credentials to come, high-tech particularly. And in the agriculture world, right now, there's an H2A, that's an extremely cumbersome way to bring people here, to streamline that process where farmers can share. You bring somebody from Mexico to cut your tobacco, well, you got a farmer next door. Why can't they cut his or her tobacco as well in a legal way? I mean, although, I'm saying all these are pathways for people to come here illegally. What we haven't dealt with yet is, how do you have low-skilled, hard-working people to come fill low-skill jobs that are going vacant? I mean, they really are going vacant, and we have to figure out a way, so just know who people are, because if 11 million's the number, and that's what we're all talking about, that's kind of a debate of that number, but let's accept that. Forty percent of those came here illegally. We really don't have a system to know when people leave. And matter of fact, the ag, we're saying they can stay here three years, and it can be renewable without going home. So it, long as you, you know, you're not in the system or whatever, you're doing things the way that you're supposed to do things here. So that's another, another thing, I think you're sensing consensus in the House, dealing... Because the thing is, what, you know, people broke the law to come here. We know they broke the law to come here. And let me hear me out for you, and say, and there are people every day in other countries waking up and going, waiting in line. I had a lady, a girl that came to see me who's a citizen, who said her parents woke up every day trying to come here, and they went for like two years, and they finally said, "We just can't get through," so they came anyway, but there's still people doing that, trying to come here illegally. Now, they came here, she was born, so she's a citizen, but she's talking about her parents. And so, I don't know what train of thought. So there's a, some momentum in the House, and Eric Cantor's leading this, to deal with, what if a kid came here at six months old, they learn English, to speak it with a Kentucky accent? You see them, there's probably some in here, because I see some young ones in here. And Mexico is really the only place, and I say Mexico, this person's from Chile. I assume you use Mexico, because that's, for, I would just say, use Mexico. Don't even know behind, they've never been there, other than when they were six months older. And so we come up with some age that if you really, you're illegal here, but you didn't personally break the law to come here. And people can go through K through 12 pretty easy as a, as a undocumented or illegal person, but once you get into the college world, it really kind of changes. You have somebody 18 years old, they came here at six months old, really only speaks Spanish in their house, and they can't go to college and get a work job, and there's really no option to go home, because there's no home. I mean, this Owensboro, wherever, we'd be at home. And I think if we can deal with that, that's what we're looking at. Another question is, what do you do with 11 million people? And there are a lot of arguments people make about that. I'll just give you what I hear, hear that, "Well, if we let 11 million people start illegally, it will depress wages." Well, I'd argue if they're working here under the table illegally, it depresses wages. So getting them in the system, but the one thing that you can't, and I, because I met with this group the other day, and I said, "The one thing that I can't argue back when somebody says this to me is, but they broke the law, and they're in front of other folks, and they came here." And so I think people say there needs to be a consequence to it. And I know the Senate has, what the Senate Bill does, if you are here illegally and you're put through the process, you have to go home for 10 years before you can apply to come back. It's like a 10-year penalty. But the issue that if you start dealing with it that way, is a lot of people came here and had kids here, and their kids are U.S. citizens. So when you start peeling this off, there are a lot of families and a lot of things that are involved in it. It's just not, well, go grab them and go home. And so what the Senate's trying to do is, how do you deal with that in a way? So they say, "You have to do the 10-year probation, but you don't have to go home to do the 10-year probation." And then they allow after 10 years to get a green card, and the green card is a path to citizenship. I'm not sure where the votes are in the House on that. And nobody really comes up to me and says, "Hi, I'm illegal. Let me tell you my story." But people do come to me and start telling their story. I assume that, I know somebody, and then they start telling the story, so it's either somebody they know or it could be them. And I hear a lot of people say this, is that, you know, maybe the consequence is, if I, if my kids can become citizens or my kids are citizens, if I can be here and I don't... Because of this girl's from Chile, her mom tries to use her to get, stay here as a citizen, she has to go home. And if they could just stay here and work and have a place to work, and they pay into Social Security, and they do that, but they don't have a pathway to citizenship unless they go home and get back in line to come home for that, there, maybe that's a compromise for that, which the consequence is, you didn't go through the normal process, so the citizenship isn't there at the end, but you've been able to stay here and get out of the shadows and work and have a family and provide for you and not worry about things would be an option. When there's some discussion of doing that. I know Speaker Pelosi, I think, has said they're not going to deliver any votes for anything that doesn't have citizenship in it. And, but I think that might be some way that you could deal with it. The consequence is, you're not getting that pathway to citizenship, but the benefit is, you can stay with your family. And so that has, that's just me talking that, because there's not a bill that even deals with it yet, as you said. But I think we have to deal with it in some way, in a way that people can feel like justice is done, but also, we look at the family side of it, too. What's that?
(Inaudible).
Well, I think you have to have, as we talked about, our first bill's border security. Border security and effective enforcement of the law, and then, but to sue the, actually, I think, I do believe taking care of the border is having a legal pathway that's workable for people to come work. I don't think anybody's going to sneak here to do work. They may come here for other reasons, which is a thing, as you discussed.
(Inaudible) 55,000 Americans have been killed by illegals. My cousin was.
Well, I mean, there are people here on all sides that commit crime, and I think that's, those, anybody in that group that did that is easy to deal with. Those are the people you send home, you send to prison.
(Inaudible).
Well, that's what we have to enforce it. We absolutely have to enforce it. All right, you're right on that. I have my hand in the back. You can either, if you came in a little later, we have a, we're on television, so we absolutely have to use a mic unless you want to do something brief, and I'll repeat it. But if you're going to, and I'm not here to limit in what you talk, because I want to hear what everybody has to say, but the logistics here, you got to use the microphone. So I guess if you do want to talk, I hate informing lines here, it looks like we're limiting what people can say, but if you want to, who have their hands in the back? You want to come to the microphone? They'll let her first, you can go second, you'll come up to them, and you can work your way up as well. That'd be good if somebody wants you to kind of make their way, I guess, if you want to talk, because it's to make it easier for everybody to get their questions in.
God bless America. God bless the Jews. Today is the first day of the Jewish New Year. Fifty... Five, seven, seven, four. Concerning illegal aliens, isn't, my observation is that many of the congressmen and women and senators are baby boomers, and they're fixing to retire, and there are not enough American workers to support their high pension. Why? Because many Americans, they test positive when they go to take a job. Many illegals, especially the Mexican, they abuse alcohol. Alcohol is not tested. So let us address the problem. It is drugs. Where does the drugs come from? If you seal the border, there will, another way coming in. The problem is, to me, America is a Christian nation, and we have rejected our Christianity. And that is my observation. Thank you.
Thanks. Drugs are a real problem. I mean, drugs are absolutely ruining vast numbers of our, of our young people. You know, the, if you want to, I'm sorry, we just have to have you use the mic, so if you want to talk, just work your way up to the mic. But the, just the TV, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be, matter of fact, I like the introduction this way, but instead of that way. You know, now in Kentucky, and I think the sheriff was here earlier, but the legislature actually did some pretty good laws on prescription drugs, particularly OxyContin that was rampant, mostly in our mountains. It's now heroin has come back. You see it in cities, you've seen it in rural area. It's absolutely true now in certain parts of our state because of what our legislature did, because of abuse of prescription drugs, it's easier to get heroin than it is to get OxyContin. And heroin is now cheaper in some areas than OxyContin. So I think your point, as you stop one scourge, which was the OxyContin epidemic, particularly in certain parts of our state, and meth, so we're not, then we can't just look at one section of our state and say, "Well, they have an OxyContin problem," because a lot of people in our area have, my area where I live, anyway, Warren County, I can say a meth problem. One of my very dear friends is head of our drug task force, and you're right. You'll hear a lot of work, a lot of employers with the high unemployment, we were doing unemployment insurance extensions. They would say, "I could hire a whole lot of people if I can get them to do two things, show up to work on time and pass the drug tests." Now, that's in the low-skilled marketplace. And not saying only low-skilled people have drug problems, I'm not saying that whatsoever, but in the low-skilled marketplace, that's where you are, and that's where a lot of demand for jobs that people are feeling, coming to feel, because you can't, it's hard to get people to pass the drug test. I have one company in about as far east from here as you can be, as soon to be in my district, which is about three hours drive. I got redistricted pretty big, that needed to hire 20 people in a manufacturing facility, probably the best wages in that county, and to hire 20 people, because you have to hire somebody to drug test them, they had to hire 212 to get 20. That was like, they hired, and they'd work three days, they leave, hire, and they'd leave, they couldn't pass the drug. There was myriad of reasons, but it's a real issue, so thanks for bringing that up. Hey, again, how are you? We're here at County Council Hall together.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Congressman. Really, I already approached you once and Hallsville, too. Chris Gutierrez is my name, Director of Hispanic Ministry here in Owensboro. I just want to encourage you to really look into comprehensive immigration reform, and I believe your heart is in the right place and that you will do the right thing. You know, I'm Mexican-American. You know, my father was once undocumented, too. He crossed the border illegally. There was no line at the time, and my family down in Mexico on his part were starving, so he did the right thing. He came. Now, he's a productive and a very good citizen of this country, and I just wanted to point that out, too. So not all, and the majority of undocumented people are really good people. And I should say, here in the city of Owensboro, there's several thousand of people that live in the shadows, that actually, we have a problem with that, that if reform continues not to pass, we have a public safety issue here, we have problems with law... problems with law enforcement. We really recommend law enforcement, Sheriff's Department, don't get involved in the immigration piece of the, of law, because they're not trained for it, okay? The federal agents are trained for it, and that should be their role. But, um, you know, more than a hundred billion dollars put into sealing the border, right, in the last seven years, forty billion dollars, still the Senate, uh, Bill seven forty-four would put into it, speaking of border enforcement. We have to look at it, at the same time we look at border enforcement, also the, the legalization piece. I think that's really important, and not just get carried away with just the enforcement part, because really, uh, it's been ignored that a lot of money, a lot of money that could be put into better use is just being poured and poured and poured, that we, those, that, that tax, uh, those tax dollars could be used better. And we have to look at the humanitarian part, the legalization part, I believe, and, and this, 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 this situation is affecting our city, it's affecting the surrounding area. And, um, for as long as we have people living in the shadows, and, uh, it's going to be a big problem. So, I believe your heart is in the right place. Do not be afraid to do the right thing. We, I know you will do the right thing. We're not talking, I'm not speaking about, we're not talking about when we say comprehensive, about open borders or not a consequence, but hey. Penalty for speeding. I, I get the ticket, right, and I pay the ticket, but let's have a consequence, but not, let's not give people the death penalty.
Thanks, thanks. Yeah, I, as I said, my heart's, I always vote what I think's right. And so, uh, when I, uh, when I cast my votes, I've done my homework, and lots of times I'll agree, and I hopefully I can be able to explain myself that people can, uh, understand the way that I, but I know I can address it with, with the other questions. So, to get more questions, well, yes, sir.
Another question, I have a comment.
Okay.
Uh, I'm Ron Holmes, I'm pastor at Asbury United Methodist Church here in Owensboro, Kentucky, and I am a strong Democrat. Yeah. I'll put that out there.
I represent everybody.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just let you, want to let you know. But my, my point is this, and you talk about immigration, you know, they keep pointing that to Mexicans. There are other races and other people here, we need to deal with. I, I believe in justice, and if you're going to do this thing, let's do it straight across the board. You know, we got people from France here illegally, we got people from all, all kinds of places here illegally. About three or four years ago, up in, up in Louisville, Kentucky, a guy was here illegally from an African nation, and he killed his wife and his kids, you know, he was here illegally. So, I'm saying, you know, let's not just focus on one race, let's be just. You know, this, this thing is supposed to be, supposed to be about justice, justice. And, and, and we need to just stop focusing on just one race and go across the board and do it right.
I agree with you, exactly, and, uh, could there be more? I don't know when, and I, and I, I think I called myself, said, "Mexican, I acknowledge that," and also, I think I said that if we're going to let border governors determine our border secure, we need to look at, when I said North Dakota, and Montana, and, and Maine, I was saying Maine and New Brunswick, I was saying that we need to make sure it's the same for Canada, and through our ports. I mean, it needs to be fair for everybody. Your, absolutely, your point is well-taken. And when you say the, the political side of it, I represent, when I, when the election day's over, and if I'm successful to be in, I represent every single person. We don't look at anything whom we serve, people. And we not always agree on my votes, by that, we're parties for certain reasons, but, uh, but I'll guarantee you'll get honest service, and if you call our office, you'll be treated just like everybody, everybody will, so, yes, say.
Good evening, Congressman. My name is Bruce Ferguson, and I was born and raised in Owensboro, and obviously I'm back here again, but I spent over fifteen years in South Florida as a representative of the Social Security Administration, a civil service employee. I was a claims representative, processing applications, and also a field representative traveling around in South Florida, where I had the opportunity to deal with both legal and illegal immigrants. And this was during the nineteen seventies and eighties. And so, I well remember the President Reagan's initiative that you spoke of in nineteen eighty-six, and the promises that were made then regarding sealing the border, which, as you said, never happened. Uh, and once again, in the Senate bill, we see this time, the promises being made. A goal was set in that bill, as you may recall, that bill, Senate Bill seven forty-four, I think it was. They set a goal that within five years, this would be done. Well, these goals have been set a number of times before now. The fence has never been built. It was supposed to be built over seven hundred miles. It's never been completed. And with this administration, the Obama administration, it won't be done again. As you know, I belong to an organization called FAIR, and I'm sure you're familiar with that organization, the Federation for American Immigration Reform, one of the really legitimate organizations that is trying to reform our immigration system. And I've belonged to that organization for twenty-seven years. I joined it in nineteen eighty-six, way back when Ronald Reagan was trying to straighten out this mess, and they've been trying to straighten it out ever since, but I must say with very little help from the federal government. Now, the one thing the federal government should do is guarantee the safety and security of its citizens. That's something the national government should do, and it has not done it clearly on our borders. So, my plea with you is, uh, thank goodness, the Republicans are in charge of the House of Representatives, unlike the Senate. So, you all have a chance to set this thing right. The Senate has punted once again. You all have a chance to set it right. And as you have already said, Speaker Boehner has wisely said, "We're going to do this thing in pieces." So, I hope the first piece that you will do, and you've indicated you will, is let's secure the border. And you need to do that first, and then you need to stop and secure the border. And when the border is secured, then you can pass, create a path to citizenship for those who are here illegally. But if you do what the Senate has done, which is simply establish a goal, once again, we've established these goals time and again. If you establish a goal, and you go ahead at the same time, and you create a path to legalization, the goal will never be met, I guarantee you, because it's never been met before, because the federal government will not do its job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. And reiterate, I've, some of the most conservative people on immigration reform that I know are, uh, would say, and I think you said it, which I, I guess, I don't know if that's fair, I guess that's fair position, is, uh, if the border's secure, and you can deal with the eleven million, I've heard a lot of people, if that's the number we're working, but I've heard a lot of people say that, if I know the border's secure, and we're not going to have this problem again twenty years from now, then they'll accept dealing with the eleven million people, because that's something we're going to have to deal with. And so, um, thanks for your, your comments. Who's next? Hey, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Yeah, great, good to see you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Pardon me for my noise.
Your time, not my.
No, I do appreciate your time and I, and hearing, hearing us out, and I want to use that to the, be concise and try to use your time wisely.
It's hard for them.
My name is Patty Chisholm. I am a family advocate with one of our local Head Start Centers, um, and I have been a family advocate with this agency for fourteen, going on fourteen years now. And I guess my purpose here tonight is, is twofold, is to possibly clarify for the general public a few things about our program that I think get lost, um, because we're so comprehensive in the things that we do for our kids, um, and families. I don't, don't think they get heard, okay? Everybody knows Head Start is for financially income, that's, that's the guideline, uh, families for, originally, to prepare them for school. Um, and we do that extremely well, but part of that process is also including the families to that process of growth and health and, and progression, so that this cycle of poverty that we see is broken. It's my job to meet with these families. And in fourteen years, April eighth, the week of April eighth, was absolutely the hardest week of my entire career, because I had to tell twenty families, they could no longer have services with us. These are full-time, working students. These are not people sitting back doing nothing. These are hard-working folks, and for no other reason than, than the budget cuts, you know, that had to happen. But what I want you all to hear is, what we do is not, it's not childcare, it's, it's, it's to get in there and help the family become much better than they were when they left. And I can say with great honor and pride and humility, I have seen families grow, come in my doors, single parents, you know, not sure what's happening in the world, how to get things done, and see them years later walk out with their degrees, they no longer need K-TAP, they no longer need food stamps, they're off and running. With me today is one of the examples, I have, this is just a funny story, and that's how she came to be here tonight. I was actually in my physician's office, and this young lady walks in, and I recognized her immediately and said, "Oh, my gosh," and of course, we hugged, because we create that bond of family and encouragement and be a part of, and learn how to teach, and you're your child's best teacher. And this, this lady here was her child's best teacher, she just needed the support to know that. But I would like to introduce to you, um, is it Callie's mom? Callie's mom.
My name is Christina Wilkerson. Thank you, ma'am. My name is Christina Wilkerson, I'm from Whitechapel, and Patty's known me for, for four years now, and I never thought that I would be considered a person of poverty, but I did find myself pregnant at nineteen. I was halfway through my nursing school, and my parents had helped me, but given the burden of a child, they couldn't help me anymore, so I lost a lot of assistance. I had a couple of friends whose children were in the Head Start program here in town, and they suggested that I go there and enroll my daughter, so I did. And it was Patty and June, who was also one of their directors, and they're amazing women, and they helped me. And I was, you know, like I said, I was a single mother, yes, I had my, my family's help, but if you wanted to put me in the population, I was, I was in poverty. I had a single child, I had no income, I, you know, I was trying to further my education with, with nothing. And so, when I joined Head Start, your requirements are, you have to work twenty hours, but no more than twenty hours if you have time, and you're, you have to be in school, which, these were my requirements, it's different for everybody. But they also did health screenings, and they helped my daughter get into a dentist, and, you know, she had her well-child checks, and Patty came to my house four times a year, she checked on me, she made sure I was doing okay. And I, eventually I did graduate, and I became an nurse practitioner, and I do work in a rural clinic now, and I see these same people who are just like myself, and they're in poverty, and I love to send them to places like this, because I try to tell these young girls, you know, I know pregnancy rates have finally leveled off, but I try to tell these young girls, there are places you can get help. You know, it's not, they, they don't need to be looked at as, you know, oil wells, where we're just feeding our money into them, and it's these girls who are sitting at home, and they're getting free daycare, and they're not doing anything. People are out there working, and they're using these centers to better their children's lives and to better their own lives, and so I feel like I'm an example of someone who used the system to its best advantage, and I came out of that hole, and I'm not on government assistance, and I've given back more than a hundred percent to my community and my town because of this, you know, not only because of this program, but this program was a large part of how I became who I am today.
You're at the community in Whitechapel, aren't you, the community center, is that where you are, the community center in Whitechapel now?
Yes.
I mean, I, yeah, to say, yeah, thanks for, thanks for sharing that, and, and, and you're exactly why you want to get out of programs, independence, and where people can get off the system, and I appreciate you sharing, sharing your story. I've been to, I know a few Head Starts, so it's good to, the thing that, that leads into the sequester, which did affect Head Start, you know, the sequester was based on the debt limit, and we're borrowing a trillion dollars a year, and, and so, trying to get our budget under control, it does affect programs, it does. And, and a lot of people say that the sequester only cut the road, the rate of growth in government, didn't really cut government, well, it depends on which program you're in. You're, it is right, we're going to spend more next year than this year, but we're going to spend less appropriated money than we spent in two thousand and nine, and most of it's actually coming out of the military, but a good program, Head Start was one of the programs that went for. And the reason is, and that's a good time to get to our budget stuff, because another debt limit's coming, and the reason is, baby, somebody accused me of being a baby boomer earlier, I forgot who did that. I am, Warren. I am the end of it, though, I was born in nineteen sixty-four, I was, so from nineteen forty-six, nineteen sixty-four is the baby boom. And in sixteen years, when I'm sixty-five years old, there will be twenty-one million more Americans retired than there are today. And so, when we first did that, what was the first super committee on the debt limit, because we borrow about forty-three cents out of every dollar, and so the idea that you just would cut by next month forty percent of the gun, you can't do that without getting into existing programs that are retirement programs that people paid into. I mean, that's the only way you can deal, deal with that volume of a cut.